The vote is a big thing. I believe, I guess, I'll just start it out briefly in saying that my opinion on it, we've done X number of zero percent levies. And I'm not saying they got us where we're at today. I believe we at least need to take a look at trying to bring, as we're doing the police pension up to where it is, in other words, the five percent or, you know, whatever that option is, whatever we're calling it, okay? I believe that we need to take a look at doing that because going further backwards is just gonna get us deeper into trouble. That's the only, the only problem I see. Nobody wants to raise anybody taxes, but I can tell you, there were one heck of a lot more people working for the city of Freeport a number of years ago than there are today. So as we take a look at these consolidations, okay, and going back to the department and say, "I want you to take 10% off your budget," those days are getting to be long gone. The low-hanging fruit has been picked over the last number of years. This isn't an easy decision, but I do need to think, say that we need to take a step forward or a slight increase to try and help the matter and then see what develops. And the other thing that was mentioned on the levy, in doing that, it will pick up the other assessment that's been brought in, which will also help. But right now, also as we talk about this, this is not talking anything about the reorganization, but the figures from the reorganization are built into this, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So that's just where I'll start it.
Mayor. I think, you know, the pension issue is very real and it's not unique to Freeport. This was not neglected by any one person, body, or previous administration. We've received good news. People are living longer. However, that does come, that is, that's good, that people are living longer, but it also just comes at an expense. And as we've done the restructuring, it has moved groups of people to retirement that have to be paid for. I will tell you though, and I say this with no hesitation, that my time in the community, which I think each would recognize, has been quite a bit as of late, and I've been learning from the constituents, both in Freeport and throughout northwest Illinois, and one thing continues to come back, time and time again, is property taxes. The challenge when you touch property taxes is it's going to put increased pressure on the valuations of the same vehicle that you're using for taxation. So I would, I recognize, I may not have you here for the final vote on this, but I would caution the council to take the posture of increasing property taxes. I think it's widely unpopular, rightfully so, some of the highest property taxes in the country. In Stevenson County, specifically in Freeport, it's over 13%. And that any increase is going to trigger an additional appetite from the other taxing bodies that take the lion's share of these dollars to increase their levy. I think it was our leadership that has offered the discipline within the city of Freeport to not raise property taxes. And you guys might recall that the Freeport School District did not raise property taxes, to my knowledge, last year in their levy, township, park districts, et cetera. And I believe it was in large part because of our position on property taxes. I think the restructuring has some merit, needs to be done cautiously, but I don't believe that the city of Freeport should overnight, because an actuary decided to change our investment outlook, and we should, in a knee-jerk reaction, start raising taxes or cutting services. I think it needs to be done in a methodical and careful way with careful consideration. I would just offer the, our council, this council, some caution to touch the property tax revenue because I don't believe, one, that would be the right vehicle for taxation. I think you all know my position on taxation by and large together, but I think the taxation on property taxes will not be well-received and the alternative should be closely examined before we look at some other issues. That's my position.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Yes, thank you. You make some valid points, but there are some others that need to be looked at. Over the past number of years, we have kept the levy at zero. We have had to cut manpower, we have had to cut services, we have had to dig into reserves, we had to dig into general fund to be able to pay for these levies, or for these pension And I think we're to the point right now where there isn't much else to go after to pay for these without having some type of increase. If we'd have, over the years, even had a small increase to where we had a reserve, we could pay for this, the impact right now would not be so great. But continued holding the line, and I think that helped increase what we're dealing with today. As far as, just because we increased the levy means the other taxing bodies are gonna increase the levy or may be tempted to? I'm not buying that one. If they're gonna increase it, they're gonna increase it no matter what we do. The fact of the matter is, we have an obligation. We have exhausted, I think, just about every other resource we have to meet these obligations without some type of increase. Do I like the idea? No, I gotta pay it on my house too. But we gotta get the money from somewhere unless somebody else can come up with another way or another type of, or revenue source where we can get the money from it. I don't see where we have any choice but some type of increase.
Oh, Mayor.
Alderman McLanahan.
Okay. So doing the math again, we've only got five people here tonight. We've got at least two individuals saying we need some sort of increase, at least. Yeah, there's some individuals saying, "Don't do an increase." So you don't get the five that way. The question I have for you, council, is when we get a number on, on here tonight, that number, I hear the zero and the five, my discussion with my colleagues, the number I hear is the zero and the five most often. If we put one of those numbers on tonight and pass it, and then there's a change in the consensus of the council, or if there's a majority of five that go the other way, you can still change that number at, on a later meeting. It's just, we have to come out of tonight with a number, correct?
Right. Twenty days before the adoption of the final levy, you need to present an estimated levy. So it's, it's an estimate, that's all it is, so.
Well, I think in one of Andrew's last meetings, if you guys think that there's gonna be a yes vote out of him, I think for any type of increase, I think we're, I think we're gonna be here well past the time where we're all gone.
Still helps.
So what I'm gonna propose, what I'm gonna ask is, would, I know, I know Alderman Keister, where you're gonna be voting, you know, on this eventually, in regards to that, and I believe I know where Tom's gonna vote on that. For purposes of getting it out for tonight's purposes only, from what I just said here, can we put the zero percent on for the, for the purposes of just getting it on here? And if you say no, then what's your proposal for us getting out of this meeting with five votes?
So is that a motion, Alderman McLanahan? I mean, let's get out of here.
It's, it's an appeal to math for tonight. I mean, it's just, it's a unique situation tonight. We don't have Alderman Busker here tonight, you know.
If I may, Mayor.
Well, did you answer the question or no?
Let me, let me hear what.
Okay. Alderman, Alderman Clem, I'm sorry.
It's, it's okay, I won't be here that long. No, I'm just kidding. You know, this is a really important thing and a really important vote, and I know for my colleague to the left here is really torn on which way to go here. There is, there is no ifs, ands, or buts about that. I would differ a little bit with Alderman Keister to say, Alderman McLanahan's using the math to say, "Hey, we haven't got five votes to do X or Y." I think if we put zero percent into it, that it can be changed next time. I, I know, for instance, you know, it's, it's real easy to say zero, but you're gonna be around next year when we lay off eight, when you guys lay off eight officers and somebody says, "Why are we gonna do that?" You know, so it, we need to take a look at a lot of things there, but if you make that motion for zero, I will second it. Don't let anything die for lack of a second. And, but I mean, it's, somebody, remember, we gotta come back to the table here and say, "Look, something's gotta happen here." And if it's a no vote, if it's a zero vote, I just want everybody to know that they understand what the repercussions of that are down the line.
And, and Mayor. Again, you know, we're gonna have a first reading and a second reading. This is just putting it on for, for purposes of, like I say, I can only have five people tonight. Well, I say aye, we only have five people tonight. So I'll make that motion for tonight. I expect fully, I mean, there's, there's gotta be some significant further discussion, some laying out of the numbers in regards to this. I don't view it as a, as a final vote on the merits tonight at all, just a practical math for tonight's purposes, the dynamics that we have with two recusals and a person gone. So I'll, I'll move for purposes of setting it to first reading alone that we put it at the zero percent for tonight.
And I'd check on that.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Alderman McLanahan, seconded by Alderman Clem, to move the tax levy proposal to zero percent onto the first reading at the next scheduled council meeting. Do attorneys either, was there something more you wanted to add?
I was just gonna ask, do we have a, an actual estimated number then for what the levy?
We do. It was, so we have, it's in, Randy, do you have the?
Yes, I do. The proposed levy with a zero percent increase would be $2,473,331.
And that includes the 23,000 addition, for council's information, 23,000 additional, we're gonna get based upon the 2.2 million increase in EAV.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Though it rubs me the wrong way to vote for it, because I am afraid that if we vote for it, if we agree to the zero tonight, it'll stay that way, and it's not the way it should go. We have time for a special meeting next week to discuss this and hash this over in more detail. If we have a special meeting next week to discuss it and come up with a better number, I'll vote zero tonight. Without that, I will not vote for it.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Well, no, I'll pass. I can't, can't say that right now, so.
Okay, so is there further discussion on the proposal? Alderman McLanahan.
Well, I'll note, well, council, ahead.
I would ask Alderman McLanahan, would you clarify your motion then to reference the actual figure, 'cause I, we need to put it at estimated dollar amount in there.
Yes, yes, I would. It's in, it's actually in a brief, so.
Okay, so, do you wanna reword that, or are we good with what we have?
Let me find the number. Didn't you just say that? Director Buecher's gonna give me the actual number again. Right, correct. For the proposed tax levy, for purposes of going to first reading. And Mayor, may I comment?
Yes.
What are we looking at for a special meeting for next week? I mean, we got first reading in the first Monday of December, and then second reading in the third meeting in December, and if we want as many in between the first and the third that we can, what would we accomplish by having a special meeting next week on it? Is just what I'm asking. I'm, you know, we got at least two meetings that are gonna be on this, and I expect substantive discussion, it's just.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
I'm just concerned at having just two meetings with council meetings to discuss this. It's not gonna, we're not gonna be able to hash it out right, 'cause like you yourself say, we have a lot of discussion to make on this. And I was just kinda hoping if we had a special meeting next week, we could get the number closer, have time to look it over and stuff, and discuss it.
Okay, so Alderman Keister, just so you know, we won't have a quorum next week. We won't, we'll be in the same boat. We won't be able to vote.
Be in a shorter vote.
I will say that I am extremely concerned about voting for this with a zero percent on it, because historically with this council and the makeup of the way it is, if we start with a zero, it stays a zero.
Madam Mayor.
But I will, tonight, stick my neck out and agree to it, and hope that I'm not disappointed.
Okay, so, do we need to have an updated of, I mean, we have a motion on the floor, but is it suffice?
I think Alderman McLanahan clarified his motion. I would just ask to see if Alderman Clem is in agreement with that mod, clarified motion for a second, to include the actual dollar figure.
Yes. I don't have any problem that way. I, I will mention, maybe somebody doesn't, but you're also gonna have different personnel to deal with.
Okay, so, before you is a motion made by Alderman McLanahan, seconded by Alderman Clem, as so stated. So Madam Clerk, do we need to have a roll on that? Yeah.
Parker.
I'll regrease myself.
Brashaw.
Epstein.
Keister.
With reservations, aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanahan. Ross.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero with two abstention.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 19, which is Department Heads' Finance.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't know if I wanna be, bear more bad news on pensions, or if I should just pass tonight, but the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund just sent out a release today, this afternoon, that they'll be voting on December 14th on the possibility of changing their investment assumption rate of return. Currently, the IMRF is assuming that the return is 7.5%, and they're looking at lowering it to 7.25%. What that means is that we'll have a greater liability. In reading their, their brief, their consultants were also recommending that they actually go down to closer to 6.1% on their assumption, but that 6.81% would be acceptable. For your general reference, in 2017, we were paying 10.93% into the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. This year, in 2018, we're paying 9.46%, and for 2019, we've gotten our final figure, and it's gonna be lowered down to 6.2%. What we're looking at is in 2020, seeing a 1.1% to 1.5% increase in the IMRF levy, IMRF contributions that we'll have to give. So they'll bring it up from 6.2% to about 7.3% or 7.7% or maybe even more. But I just thought I'd let you know that IMRF is also looking at lowering their assumptions on when their rate of return. That's all I have for tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Development.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, just a couple things. We continue to work with Region One on an application for the pre-disaster mitigation grant. That could pay for the acquisition and demolition of flood-prone properties. We've very recently begun to gather signatures of support as part of our grant application from business owners and residents east of the river, where our most flood-prone areas lie. And we just issued a building permit from our department for Harbor Freight Tools to locate a store in the former Staples Building on West Avenue. Harbor Freight will invest approximately $220,000 into our community to remodel that building. The renovations will take about nine weeks to complete, bringing the project into late January, and we are very happy to see all of their subcontractors are local, including for HVAC, plumbing, commercial, and electric. Great to see those crews will be busy this winter on that exciting development. Thank you.
Great news, thank you. Director Carr.
Yes, thank you. I'll give a little update on our leaf pickup, as, as we have fallen behind, but we are trying to catch up the best we can. Just so that way, council is aware, our current leaf pickup consists of four machines. Each of those machines is then outfitted with two trucks that fit just that single machine. A lot of that has to do with when the machines were built and how the boxes were designed to fit with them. Currently, we have one machine down, and with that one machine down, that takes two trucks down. On top of those two trucks down, we've had one machine break down, and it is currently in Benell and Dixon. So we are currently down to three machines and five trucks. In the next few days, we will be using end loaders and five-yard dumps, as well as the machines, to try to help with some of the bigger piles that have built up. In general, what happens most days is we'll have two groups of three people, that's two trucks and a machine, and then one group of two. The one truck and one machine, or one, one truck and one machine can pick up roughly five to eight loads a day, and the two trucks and one machine can pick up around 13. We have about 17 areas in town, and the two trucks and one machine can usually get from one half to one. So when you add up those numbers, you can see why it takes a little bit of time to get around town. But we are working hard and they are working overtime, and we just say, please be patient.
Thank you. Fire. I'm sorry, Alderman Parker.
Question for Mr. Carr. Supposedly, then, this weekend's the end of leaf pickup, right? Monday is done? What are they going, are they, any human possibility of having them picked up by Monday?
So what we have asked is that you have your leaves set out by Sunday. We will begin our last trip around the city Monday. So once Monday arrives, if our truck passes your house, theoretically, that is, you are late. So we ask that you have them out by Sunday, so that way, when we begin our last round, that is, that is what we are beginning our last round on Monday.
So when you start your last round Monday, you will be able to get through the whole town then on Monday, or?
No, it will take us probably three to four weeks to get around town.
Thank you.
Fire.
Thank you, Mayor. Just if everybody would, I want everybody to know, if you can pass on to your constituents, we're taking applications for a position of firefighter on the Freeport Fire Department. So we're taking applications until December 21st, so wanna get the word out to the community and get some good people to apply for our two-year list that'll, that'll hopefully be in place by May 1st. One more item. Last Thursday, at Cub Foods in collaboration with the Police Department, Officer Whitmore and firefighter Brennan kind of spearheaded an operation called Smoke the Turkey. Was very successful. A hundred turkeys were passed out, along with 110-pound bags and boxes of stuffing, and then also smoke detector installation. So that was kind of in collaboration. These two guys got together across the lines and worked together between police and fire to do a good thing for the community and hopefully make us safer. So it was a good event, it was fun.
Thank you. Police.
Thank you. And just, I wanna thank the Fire Department for collaborating with us on that. I think it's a, it's a good thing to give back to the community. Just to clarify, and Chief Allen wouldn't have known, it wasn't Officer Whitmore. He probably would've if he hadn't retired, but it was Officer Whitfield. Whitfield. That's okay, that's okay. But I just wanted to remind everybody, today, we, we kick off our Step Grant campaign, and if everybody remembers, that's a camp, that Step Grant is money that's awarded to us to help with traffic enforcement right around the Thanksgiving campaign. So slow down, buckle up, stay off your electronic devices, and obviously, don't drink and drive. So, along with enforcement, you know, news, I also wanna talk about Shop with a Cop. We're gonna be, again, trying to give back to the community, December 8th, Saturday. We'll be at Walmart this year. If anybody still wants to contribute, they can still do that with, to the PB and PA, number nine, if they wanna contribute, do that. We're picking out families right now, underprivileged families, to go on a shopping spree, foreclose, and other things that, you know, are gonna be essential for the kids, so they can have a good Christmas. One other thing, too, is December 6th is a Thursday. The, the Police Department, again, will be out to Walmart, ringing the bell against the Fire Department. For the Salvation Army will be in competition, trying to, to raise money, again, for the less fortunate folks out there. So anybody can come by there and drop some money and to either kettle. I, I would prefer you in the police, but if you, is give, and that's, that's really what makes, what it's all about. So that's all I have, thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Keister.
Yeah, Chief, just one quick question. I have noticed the past few days to a week, I've seen a lot of state patrol vehicles in the, in the area in Freeport. Is there a special enforcement thing going on right now, or?
It's, I, I can't speak for the state police, but I know that they participate in the Step Grant campaign as well. Maybe theirs was extended just a little bit more, and maybe that, maybe that's exactly why. But I know that we will be working in conjunction with them and police departments throughout the state to make sure everyone has a safe holiday.
Okay, thank you.
Water and Sewer.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, nothing tonight.
Thank you. IT?
The new website launched about a week ago. I've been very happy with it. I think it's gonna be a really great tool. We're gonna continue to add content and hopefully some interactive tools for citizen engagement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like we'll move on to City Manager's report.
Just two quick things. Air One is continuing to move out. We're hoping to have them completely cleared, and as Arrow Heritage is moving in, we are getting that, and great work by the Public Works Department and Water and Sewer as we go forward, hooking up everything and making that, that happen on time. One, January is their official, but they are actually trying to get in prior to the January holiday. And I'm just gonna expand a little bit on the pre-disaster flood mitigation grant, community development. This is a voluntary program. Anybody that is in a, in any of the floodways can come in, sign up for it. It still doesn't commit you, it just commits us, and there is up to $5 million available for the community to purchase properties, and I begin to hold those properties in a land bank as we go forward. It is a voluntary program. Connie Marnie at the front desk is taking, taking it for private residents, and the Community Development Director, any business that is interested in doing that, that's in the floodways, can contact the Community Development Director.
Mayor.
Alderman Ross.
Not that I'm interested in it, no. I'll let you know that right off the bat. But what are the criteria for it? I mean, as for, say a business was in the floodway, how does he prove that he has a business there?
So we have all the GIS PIN numbers that are listed within the floodways. That's both Yellow Creek as well as east of the Pecatonica. We've done that, gone through them and identified those, and we, so we match those along. We've gone with a tax assessment, so we look at the tax assessment. If they have flood insurance, they can get up to three times the value of the property for relocation.
Okay, Mayor. Would a state tax number be advisable to? I mean, as a, you know, to prove that, you know, he's been working out of his business? I mean, I just don't wanna see some guy come in and say, "Well, I got a business over there," but he hasn't done anything out of it, and who knows?
That's actually, that is not a requirement for the initial registration.
Okay.
That, as we go further on, there'll be more, and this is federal money, this is not, so this is federal.
State, okay, this is.
It's federal money. This is, uh, Illinois Department of Natural Resources reached out to us in, uh, 1st of October, uh, and recommended us go all this way, because we can actually go beyond the value of the homes and the value of the properties based upon some criteria, uh, as we go into this pre-mit, mitigation, and I, I believe this is very similar to what, uh, Pearl City used to start, uh, removing their homes out of the floodway. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, um, at 7 o'clock tonight is the community Thanksgiving worship service at the St. Paul Missionary Baptist Church, if anyone would like to attend, I know, uh, Manager Crowe and I will be going, and also, just wanted to draw attention to yesterday was the mistletoe walk in the downtown, and just hundreds and hundreds of shoppers that showed up for that. So what a huge success, so thank you to all those businesses that stayed open, as well as FHN did their tree lighting ceremony, and lots of people attending in that, so it just is a, a signal that the holiday season is upon us. So I would like to, uh, just end by saying, um, happy Thanksgiving to each one of you, and, uh, have safe travels if you're going anywhere. Alderman Parker.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Braschow.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Keister.
Other than happy Thanksgiving, Mayor, and to everyone out there, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Chesney.
Thank you, uh, just, uh, so the public knows, I think many Aldermen know, um, I'll be submitting my, uh, letter of resignation to Clerk Anderson effective November 27th. Um, it has certainly been an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of Freeport in this capacity, uh, I've always tried to make the best decisions for the city, I feel we've made a lot of progress, um, that I'm very proud of, in the three and a half years that I've been in this capacity. Um, I'm very proud of our efforts, uh, as a city council to make a decision on City Hall, um, that was kicked around for quite some time, and I was, uh, very happy to see that this body, uh, could get on the same page with that. Um, also, uh, Manager Crowe, I'd like to recognize your efforts, um, for the city, um, I was privileged to be on the committee and the chairman of the committee to bring you to Freeport, and I think you've done an excellent job, and, uh, for your service and dedication and countless hours, thank you. Uh, to the city staff, thank you for your time, um, I know at times, some of you have seen, I think Chief Barklow has seen our long meetings, um, so, my apologies, we did try to get it right, um, sometimes we got it wrong, I do recall this body, some people in this council chambers where we debated fireworks for an hour, so those that had to endure that painful process, I do apologize, but we hope to get better. Uh, Sean Bolt, I think, said it best, that nobody has a permanent lease on anyone's seat, and I am confident that this body will continue on in the right trajectory, uh, some things you will change, that I fought for, which is okay, and hopefully some things that you'll keep in place, um, so it has been an honor and a privilege, uh, to serve with each of you, and, um, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Alderman Chesney, and just to say that we truly appreciate the service that you have given to this council, and while we are sad to see that you are moving on and giving us your resignation, we couldn't be prouder to have the, the, a state representative that truly represents Freeport, so thank you very much. Alderman Clem.
Andrew, thank you for your service, I appreciate it, uh, I'd just like to reach out, uh, to everybody and remind them, uh, if you'd like to donate with the shop, for the Shop with the Cop, please do so, uh, get ahold of one of the members, uh, stop down at, uh, police station, uh, give them a check, great, uh, uh, great job they do with some kids that, uh, really do need some assistance, and I think if I remember right, you always make sure they get a toy also, correct? One toy, all the rest is enclosed and stuff. Uh, the only other thing I'd like to mention is, uh, we got good news the other day from the Salvation Army, that, uh, the, uh, Thanksgiving dinner, all the places have been filled as far as help for that, I know, probably Sally's probably on that list, smiling over there, but, uh, please, uh, get ahold of them for bell ringing, it's extremely important, uh, we have the Korean War vets out here tonight, they do it every Wednesday at Chapco, uh, it's a good give back to your community, and it's a good thing to meet a lot of people in, great organization that, uh, serves some people that slipped between the cracks and other organizations, so, thank you and have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Alderman McLanathan.
There's two things, one, I think Tom was trying to arrange for some Aldermen to do some bell ringing too, so, see if you can sign up for some times and work with Tom in regards to that. Second of all, um, Andrew, thank you, it's been a pleasure working with you, and we got a laundry list of things we want you to take downstate and make it easy for us up here, so, uh, get on it.
First thing, I thanks pensions.
Yeah, exactly.
Alderman Ross.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
All right, that leaves us with public comment.
Tommy.
Tommy.
I wanted to thank Don Parker for voting for that, that thing tonight. And, uh, Chief Parker, uh, I wanted to tell you, uh, you did a good job, and you're gonna find those more people, right? Tell them to get on the ball and find them.
Any other public comment?
My name is Ralph Dyson, I'm the commander at the AMVET Post 32 here in Freeport, and one of your members for the Public Works was very helpful with us in order to get one of our veterans buried in an honorable way. His family didn't wanna do it, they were gonna find an old ditch somewhere and dump the remains of a cremation, so if the Public Works Director would come up here, I will present these to you, so that you can give them to Scott Nevenhoven. And I don't think I'd wanna come back, I've had to wait five months to give him his award. Okay. Here is one, excuse me. Can you hear me? This is a certificate of appreciation from AMVET's Department of Illinois, Department Commanders, and awarded to Scott Nevenhoven, and grateful appreciation about standing in support for the aims, purposes, and programs of the, uh, AMVET, and it's signed by our Commander, Darryl Tucker. This one here is AMVET's Department of Illinois, Post 32 Commander's Appreciation Certificate, awarded to Scott Nevenhoven, and secure gratitude for dedicated services provided to Illinois veterans, AMVET, and our community, and it's signed by me, Ralph C. Dyson. So if you would give them, okay? Scott was very helpful in getting, uh, one of our veterans buried out at City Cemetery. We tried since August to get him taken care of, and Tom knows what I mean, and he finally stepped up and said, hey, I got places here at City Cemetery, and so that's where we put him. And Tom, I had to chase him down for five months to presenting him with an AMVET, uh, of the year award at our last meeting, so it took us five years, so, not five years, but five months.
Thank you.
And.
Well, I wanna thank Tom too, uh, uh, I am, uh, the chapter commander here in, in Freeport of the Korean War Veterans, I'm also the state commander of the Korean War Veterans, and Fred was a, a hard worker for the Korean War Veterans, ringing the bell days and days, helping people, and he, he really deserved this, and with the help of Tom, we were able to get it accomplished, and I truly appreciate everything that was done, and I appreciate what Scott did. We sent him a thank you note, and it came back. We usually address on a business card, but we got returned. I was down, I was, I was down to the graveyard today to see if, if, if Scott was there, and, and I couldn't find him, so I thought I would do that tonight, and I appreciate all your help, thank you very much.
We really appreciate what he does for the veterans, because I go out there every year, when we put flags out for Memorial Day, and I see him a week before, and I say, hey, where can I start? And he'll tell me where I can start putting flags out, and for those that you don't know it, there's over 700 veterans out there, and there is one from the War of 1812. So, we're, we're proud to do all this kind of stuff.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Tom.
No problem.
Is there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Clem, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good evening.